All right, all right. So we're gonna call the meeting to order for the special needs and operations committee meeting. Today, we'll kind of just go around and do quick, brief introductions. And then we'll get started. We've got a short agenda today. We have two items on the agenda, so we shouldn't have to be here till 5:30. All right, we'll start over there to my right in the corner.
Hi, Terry Proctor, Communications Department.
Liz Large, Contracted General Counsel.
Lisa Lassler, Project Manager, Jefferson Modernization.
Kareem Hassanadeh with Collocate Design, Community Engagement and Organizing on the Jeff project.
Karina Kresko, Senior Director of the Office's Modernization.
Ayana Horn, Project Manager, Jefferson Laboratory Modernization.
Willmans, usually the DSC representative from Lincoln High School.
Awesome. Gary Hollins, Chair of Operations and Board Member.
Julia Brenn, Edwards Board Member.
Herman Green, Board Member and, yeah, Committee Member and Community Person and Advocate for the community.
Rosanne Pell, Board Manager.
Jonathan Garcia, Advocate and Chief of Staff.
Garrett Blackshack, Detective Assistant.
Yeah, some people over there on the right.
David Main, Communications Manager for the Bond Programs.
Hannah White, Mining and Rails.
Awesome, awesome. All right, so we have two agenda items. And so we will turn it over to Marina and get started.
Thank you. We are giving a progress update presentation on the Jefferson High School Modernization. We've asked Kareem to join us as well today to really focus a little bit more on the community engagement side of things. So we're gonna go through a little bit with our team here first. Kareem will kind of jump in and get on the call or some things after he's finished this piece.
I will start with the land acknowledgement and anti-afroshame statement. At PPS, we strive to strengthen our relationships with the Native community and Native nations. A symbol of this commitment is a land acknowledgement. These statements bring visibility to the First Peoples of our collective home. This statement is meant to provide information and context while also encouraging all of us to reflect on our current relationship with Native peoples and Native experiences. We acknowledge that we live, work, and play on the traditional land of the Chinook, Clackamas, Kalafuya, Mohtoma, Wasco, Tualatin, and Malala. We also know that many other tribes made their homes along the Columbia and Malamet rivers. We honor their history and acknowledge the sacrifices they made. Let us also acknowledge the robust, present-day federally recognized tribes of this area, the Grand Ron, Soletts, and Cowlets. In addition, I would like to acknowledge the Chinook Nation, who has been seeking federal recognition for many years. The Urban Indian Community is made up of tribal diversity that originates from around the country, representing 400 tribes. The Urban Indian Community has a vivid history made up of people whose journeys have brought them to Portland by ways of forced displacement or seeking more opportunities. Today, these tribes and communities celebrate their heritage, showing resilience and tenacity that was greatly admired by their ancestors. Within Portland Public Schools today, we serve students and families representing more than 150 tribal nations within our education system. It is our obligation to teach accurate information, past and present, about the impact of colonization on our students, all students today, and make visible the multitude of Native families and many diverse ways Native communities and families are living in the present. We encourage every person to reflect on their own history, understand the history of colonization and genocide, and support Indigenous sovereignty, priorities, and actions. This acknowledgement is one step that we can take to improve our support of Indigenous communities in the area. In addition to acknowledging the land and those that have been here since time began, we must also remember our stolen siblings from Africa, whose labor built the vast wealth of this country. These two communities and the atrocities committed against them are intrinsically intertwined due to our existence within a white supremacist world. Everything we have is due to stolen land and stolen labor, and every system and institution that impacts our lives is built upon this legacy. It is our job to speak that truth into spaces so that we can begin to heal.
Thank you. One quick thing, I want to give acknowledgement. Vice Principal Fred Jackson passed away. Oh, retired Vice Principal, passed away. He was the Vice Principal of Benson High School. I just found out like 20 minutes ago. And I would be remiss not to mention something. He was a real big part of my time at Benson. And when we talked about like the disciplinary stuff, he was like the disciplinary stuff at Benson. And he'd be missed. Just want to give like an acknowledgement of that.
Thank you. Yeah, having that moment at the end of the statements, like every time I finish reading that statement, I do take a moment to just like, it just caused for a moment to pause. Okay, leaning in then to the project timeline. This provides a quick overview of the project schedule. The planning for the project began back in 2019, when we first engaged with the community on the conceptual master plan. And with that, we used that process to help develop a scope, schedule, and budget for the Jefferson High School Modernization project for the 2020 Bond. And as you can see, we are currently still in the planning phase as we finish up the comprehensive plan. The plan provides the basic structure for design, and we will go to the Board of Education for approval for that next month. That is the beginning of the design, which will last for several months and ultimately lead to construction. Throughout all of it, we will be continuing to ask the community for input and feedback, and that cycle will continue and providing progress updates along the way. Throughout the planning and design process to date, we have reached out to multiple stakeholders from all different types of groups. Those include stakeholders from the Jefferson High School community, community members such as alumni, incoming families, neighbors, and school partners. Regulatory agencies are shown over there in the gray, and they have a lot to say about what's built. And internal PPS stakeholders, such as district leaders from across all departments, board members, CBSE leadership, and the Bond Accountability Committee. Here are some of the many events that we have done throughout the summer and earlier in the year that document the provided stakeholder input. Next, you'll hear from Kareem, who is from our engagement partner, Collocate. And Kareem will tell you more about what we've been hearing from the community.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Glad to be here to be able to talk through this. And I'll start by saying this is gonna be the tip of the iceberg. We've got a lot more conversations ahead of us as design gets really underway in Phase Two. And this is a point-in-time snapshot of where we are as the assembly of this presentation. So we, over the course of the last six months, had over 600 stakeholder conversations, whether that's in the form of one-on-one conversations or events or large group, large focus groups or gatherings, where we're interacting with folks, working in classes with students. And through that effort, well over 700 comments, those are the ones that we've tracked thus far, but we're still entering more into our spreadsheet and looking for the themes and narratives that emerge from all the conversations that we have. So as we are having conversations in community, we're listening for what are the narratives, what are the themes that emerge consistently and rise to the top in terms of priorities and concerns, in terms of opportunities and the ways that people are envisioning the future and how it could work for them and how the spaces at Jeff could work for them, as well as the ways that activities happen within the spaces better, more equitably, more inclusively. So we prioritize as Collocate users or stakeholders, community members, who are disproportionately impacted by a project and tend to have the least amount of influence over decision-making processes in these types of architectural efforts. Many people don't understand how these processes work. It's really opaque. It's difficult to access for a lot of folks who don't have architectural training or backgrounds. And yet, they are going to be impacted by these projects day in and day out for generations. So it's really critical that we're connecting with folks for whom the outcomes are gonna have a substantial personal impact. So having defined a little bit around, a little bit about who are primary users and how we prioritize users, I'm gonna dive in a little bit to the design justice considerations for the sort of big scenarios that we've been studying throughout this phase, which is really around whether it should be a full replacement or a modernization, renovation, expansion project. And within our primary stakeholders groups, as we define them, it's important to acknowledge and recognize that the Black community in Portland with multi-generational roots in the historic Albina region of this city has a lot at stake in this school as both historically predominant Black school, as well as the context of gentrification and displacement that continue to this day and are ongoing. And that this school, like so many schools, exists as both a space for learning, as well as a cultural institution with deep meaning for folks over multiple generations, whether they are themselves personally alumni or not. So starting from that point, many of these narratives that have emerged over the course of our conversations within community may not be a surprise to folks who have an understanding of the history of development of urban modernization in the place that people have interacted, both with development and institutions, government agencies, and public processes that govern those systems. So around the topic of modernization and support for saving an historic element of the existing Jeff spaces and expanding, the primary narratives that have emerged are around spatial justice, displacement and gentrification, and cultural pride in place. We have heard about cultural significance within the context of displacement at Jeff. We've also heard and observed the continued demolition of historically Black spaces in this city and the ways that that is traumatizing now for communities today, for students and their families today, as well as existing within a legacy of trauma that has as yet been unaddressed by this city in any meaningful reparative way. There are efforts underway in many different outcomes towards that, but the healing has not yet. There's also been belief that full replacement is predetermined from a lot of folks that we've talked to. And that plays into those fears of Jeff is gonna be taken away from the community, that they're gonna build a new school for the neighborhood as it exists now with the changing demographics and essentially building a school for gentrification. I, I'll get into some of the more detail of the themes and narratives as we move through the slideshow, but trust has been a huge one, trust or lack thereof with this institution, with Portland Public Schools and the legacy of harm that many Black and Brown families have experienced from this institution over, again, generations, as well as how that interacts with or relates to people's experiences in other public processes, where maybe they've been asked, "What do you think?", and then never really seen the results of that or have been able to follow that thread of how that's being communicated back to them and their needs or their desires are being demonstrated in the outcomes. It's also important to note, the Black community remains rooted in this place. And so in some of our conversations with folks in the neighborhood, parents, alumni, other stakeholders, we have heard comments along the lines of, "Well, why does it matter to design for Black and Brown families if they're not in this neighborhood anymore? Shouldn't we be designing for the people who are here today?" And I want to just state, I haven't heard that coming out of a place of where I would imagine direct malice or, you know, personal bias, so much as concerned that if we're designing for a modernization, then does that mean that the students who are coming into this school now will be losing out on something? Does that mean that the resources that would otherwise have gone into a new facility will no longer be available? So I'll get to that on the next slide a little bit. But it's necessary to recontextualize that the Black community remains rooted in this, in this place, in this part of the city and at this school in the context of a neighborhood that's become virtually unrecognizable to many people over the last decades. So that connects to this sentiment or narrative that full replacement would do irreversible damage to the continuity of connection to place and heritage that many folks in the Black community feel towards Jeff, that there are very few places still standing, structures still standing within the neighborhood in northern northeast Portland that can visibly connect to those layers of history. And when folks say, "My parents went here, my grandparents went here, my cousins went here", and the thought that some edifice of this structure will no longer be standing, that there's a lot of sense of loss or grief connected to that. And again, historic buildings anchor cultural connections. It's not so much about the architectural integrity of a building or the historic integrity of a structure so much as it is the fact that it has continuity and presence over multiple generations. And the experiences that folks have had in those spaces are critical to social and cultural cohesion. And jubilance and joy and delight and all the things that we look for when we gather with others. So around considerations for supporting replacement, renovation quality concerns have been the largest piece that has emerged, as well as concerns around safety. And then some concern or sentiments around the legacy of the namesake of this school, Thomas Jefferson, being a white supremacist who enslaved human beings. And so for some people, that topic alone is enough to say, "It's easy to be a Brown and we need to start over." That's the only way to get a free break with that legacy. However, that is a much smaller subset of the folks that we've been engaging with. That has not been the predominant narrative. For the most part, it really has been. If you've seen the existing conditions of the building, it's hard not to question how those buildings still standing could be made safe if you don't understand or haven't experienced what a full renovation or remodel of a historic structure looks like. So knowing that there's signs up on the water fixtures that say, "Don't drink the water", knowing that there has been extensive asbestos remediation in the building over the last few years, knowing that there are tiles that fall off the ceiling and holes in the walls, you know, those experiences from students, from alumni, from community members drive a lot of the concern. Is it possible to do a good job and create a safe, healthy environment for students, teachers, faculty, and community members through a renovation? And I think that also, that really speaks to the work that we have collectively ahead of us to communicate what, clearly what it means to go about undertaking a project with this school. So we're actively out there having those conversations, gathering these concerns and questions, so that we're able to respond to them more effectively. But it's important to know where there are gaps and where there are communication breakdowns on what we as experts or folks who've worked in this space for a while understand and what folks who are coming into it fresh may, may not. So across the board, for any scenario, there is alignment, which is, shouldn't be a surprise. Because ultimately, whether the historic structures are saved, renovated, and expanded upon or fully replaced, people want the spaces to function in a particular way. They want to see Jeff as a cultural student and community hub, a place where people don't feel like they're being caged out or caged in. They want to see state-of-the-art facilities and culturally relevant programs and pedagogy. We've actually been asking specific question in our engagement around, "If you could envision a curriculum for social justice, what would that look like?", and getting some really, really beautiful suggestions and ideas there. That touch on everything from CTE to specific programs around transformative justice or research studies. So there's a lot about that. Present and future health and safety concerns has come up a lot. So in addition to how will the future spaces be made safe? How will the current spaces be made safe? How will students stay safe and healthy in those environments throughout construction? There's both enthusiasm, excitement, and interest in the prospect of being so close to a construction site that you can actually learn from it as an experience, as well as a concern around how to keep students and other stakeholders safe during the construction process. And if anything can be done to ameliorate the current conditions in any way while this is happening for those who are gonna be in the building over the next several years, that continues to raise the question. Beyond that, things like covered outdoor gathering spaces for students and community, the exterior spaces around the school are not really designed or developed to the full capacity to be able to support the types of experiences folks are looking for. There's a lot of interest in revitalizing historic programs that have existed at Jeff in the past, as well as increasing economic opportunity through other upcoming, other more contemporary programs. So within that, the TV production curriculum that existed at Jeff gets cited often as something beloved, both for the relationship that the teacher, Mr. Lenny Edwards, is able to build with, with students over many generations of students, but also the importance of being able to tell your own story and be able to effectively use the tools of mass communication to advocate for oneself or one's community and communicate to one's own community, rather than having narratives imposed upon one's community is really, is really significant and important to many folks we've spoken to. And then, this is maybe obvious if you have had to go through classes or navigate the building at Jeff currently, but less stairs, new elevators, a simpler layout, more daylight, a lot of that is coming from the students directly. And, you know, while I am always cautious to say we can't guarantee we'll put escalators or slides into the building, I think it, it does speak to the accessibility of the building currently, and it, it needs to be addressed in the design. So that was a high-level overview, and I'll, I'll leave it to y'all to check me on time. But I want to cover what the main narrative themes are in a little bit more depth as we, as we keep working towards this, this beautiful new Jeff project. So as I noted, we did copious notes in every conversation that we have. And in those notes, once we've transcribed them, we are looking for talking points, words, phrases, things that clue us into themes that then kind of aggregate up into a broader narrative. We're listening for who is most impacted by a project, who's most vulnerable within the communities associated with the project, what the prevailing concerns might be within those communities. And those may be spatial and often are, but are not constrained to spatial concerns. So we are listening for implications around program and policy as well as space. Because if you have a conversation with someone, ask them, "What do you think about this space?", they're gonna tell you about the experiences that they have accessing that space. They're gonna tell you about the challenges that they have getting resources through that space or navigating the process to be able to do a particular thing there. And those are more tied to policy governing how space is used or accessed, as well as programs and what is actually supported within the architecture. So we don't censor or try to separate those out or say, "No, don't talk about that, let's listen, we only want to hear about this." But we're also listening for operational considerations, questions and concerns about the project, the process, our team. Get a lot of questions like, "Who are you and why do you care?", and we should be able to answer that. And then potential opportunities that the communities that are most impacted by this effort will, will have around how to address underlying conditions of the project. So that takes us to the narratives that we see on the side there. As I mentioned earlier, trust, identity, culture, and belonging, which tends to be one of the largest ones. Safety, access, flexibility, and change, resources, delight, and then embracing the outdoors. As we continue to move through this, new narratives may emerge. The breakdown of the specific themes or subtopics within each of these narratives will probably shift in terms of proportion. But again, this is a snapshot of where we are right now. So I'll give an overview of these, and then if there's time, I can go through in a little more depth on each of the narratives themselves. If there's not, I'm happy to answer questions, and that detail exists in the slideshow. We are putting together, right now it's around 60 pages, but we're putting together our summary report, which is an implications report that, again, covers all of these in depth with specific decision points and considerations on each around spatial policy and programmatic. So trust, trust really is about recognizing the ways that Black, Indigenous, and Indigenous in color have been impacted by systematic racism and injustice and how that has manifested within district policies, procedures, and spaces over many generations. And ultimately, this is really about why people don't want to engage in this process in the first place, or if they do, where the fear, anger, mistrust, and, and concern is coming from. And there's a lot there. Under identity, culture, and belonging, these, these conversation points and comments really are highlighting Jeff as a cultural institution.
Time up.
Sorry. We'll take calls in a moment. So this is really about how Black and Brown communities use this space and access this space as a cultural institution and resource, as well as the need to make it welcoming, resourceful. What does welcoming and belonging mean in a school, at this school? How can the space empower communities of diverse racial, ethnic, and other affinity groups? And also reflecting the strength that communities find in their, in their interactions at Jeff. Security, safety, we make a bit of a distinction between those two. They often get used interchangeably. Safety is about more than just the physical security of the building. So security really is about things like access and physical infrastructure. And things come up around perimeters, keeping a secure perimeter, making sure that folks who are entering the space aren't supposed to be there. And that any transparency needs or things to support visibility around security are in place. Safety is, encompasses physical and emotional harm, but is much more about the interpersonal dynamics around that, as well as public health concerns such as COVID. So we're continuing to hear on this topic a lot of need for things like support for mental health for students and staff as well, and things like restorative justice, transformative justice processes that lead to a more safe environment overall, rather than solely emphasizing or focusing on how a space is policed or surveilled, which tends to be the sort of main tactic for addressing security in many, many architectural instances.
Okay, so you got about 10 more minutes.
Okay, I'll sum it up. Access, accessibility, this is probably something familiar to many folks in this room, but it's, it is both about accessibility for disabled students, faculty, as well as inclusive and universal access for neurodiversity, gender diversity, economic diversity. How do people access these spaces physically and financially if that is a barrier? Flexibility and change, this needs to be a dynamic building and school that works over the next 100 years for however our city and our students' needs evolve. And so some of this is designing for things that are as of yet unknown, but it helps us understand what, what future orientations folks are thinking about. And resources is around not only educational and sociocultural resources, but also having to do with broader systemic issues that affect students' lives and that can be addressed through their experiences at school, such as food, housing, rest, lack of ability to get enough sleep, transportation, all of these things are resources that have an impact on students' ability to succeed and thrive in their communities as well. Delight hopefully speaks for itself. It's what's delightful, it's what's inspiring, it's what's joyful. It's the things that make people feel like they are entering a space of celebration and resilience and creativity. And then embracing the outdoors is really around just what it says, how to use outdoor spaces, connect them to spaces, connect them to indoor spaces, bring that biophilia into the building, and make, take advantage of the beauty of Oregon and Portland around this campus, again, so it's not just big fields that aren't necessarily very hospitable or functional in flexible ways. These overlap, these intersect. So, in our report, you'll see references where we'll call out, like, "This is a topic under trust, but let's look for more information under resources." And I don't think I'll have time to go through each of these, but...
Yeah, I would like to see the, see, like, what kind of options were. It looked like you guys narrowed down some options, so I would like to get into that a little bit.
Yeah, just to build on that is like, so taking that great summary you just produced, I think it's a lot of rich feedback from the community, then how is, how is that impacting or informing?
It's funny, you should ask if you've ever had a next slide to talk a little bit about that. Awesome. So, really what we tried to do is put together a little bit of a diagram of how all the different inputs lead into the planning and design process. And I think there are a couple of things that we want to take away from this, which is, first of all, there are lots of different inputs that we're getting, and certainly there's many different ways that we're reaching out to the community and get community engagement. We have other stakeholders as well, and so that engagement is occurring at the same time with our staff, with focus groups in that district. We're getting these inputs from our ed specs, for example, if you have design guidelines that inform materials, for example, right, or systems. All of those things are going to feed into both the planning and the design. And so, we get this question of, "Well, how does my particular input reflected in your comprehensive plan?" It may not be reflected in the comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is really just the first step to the design. And some of the input that we get is going to be very general input, and it helps us narrow things down for the comprehensive plan, which, you know, things like the general site layout, where we're going to put the front entry, how big should the buildings be, what's the mass of them, where are different programs generally going to go so that they're, you know, close to each other, or how are we going to face the construction? These are the kinds of questions that we're trying to answer as part of the comprehensive plan. It's the, the structure or the framework that the design then builds on. So, a lot of the input that we get now may go to the comprehensive plan, or it may actually just continue going towards the design, which is a process of narrowing down options and getting more and more detail into how the building is actually going to be constructed, how it's going to be looked at. So, you know, we wanted to kind of call this out because many people seem to think that this comprehensive plan is, you know, that's it. You're not going to ask us any more questions after that, and, "Oh, by the way, I don't see how this thing I said about X is in your comprehensive plan." It's not the end. It's really just the beginning. It is the starting point. We will continue to take input, we will continue to use that input as we refine the design, and we're certainly keeping track of, you know, all of the things that we're getting. 60 pages Kareem was talking about. It's a starting point, right? There is so much more ahead of us in terms of how, how much feedback we're going to need.
And so, that, what you just explained there, is that getting communicated out to the, to the community as well, like, "Hey, guys, this is just a starting point."
We've been trying to communicate that, we're going to keep communicating.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Sometimes it's hard to...
It's hard for them.
To gather, but no, we just continuously letting them know that, that, you know, "Hey, this is a starting point, this is not over, we still got a whole lot..."
Yeah, nothing is over.
That repetitive stuff has been always been, so I appreciate that.
And I think it's the collective, I mean, and I'm learning, what I'm learning from my end is like the collective responsibility, like, it's not just on this team, it's like, so when I get asked about Jefferson, it's like, "Yeah, and it's, you know, master plan in December, and then it continues, engagement continues, here's how you can get engaged," right? So, I think all of us having that universal talking point will be important.
So, just build, build on that. What is coming to the board in December? Like, it would be useful to know, like, here are the, here are the major components that are coming to the, the board in December?
The comprehensive plan will come to the board in December, what we used to call the master plan.
Yeah, so I guess, like, what, like even more, like the click down, like, what, like the major, and I don't need to do it now, but like, what are the major components? Like, this is this phase, and then when people say, "But, you know, what about X?", and it's like, "Oh, well, that's coming later." So, as part of this, everybody educating people at what point in time things are coming, so being able to understand.
So, basically what you're going to see similar to the master plans, you're going to see site, general site plans, you're going to see some very basic floor plans. Think of them as bubble diagrams but with squares, right? There won't be circles, they'll be a little more squared off. General layout of the buildings, you're going to get information regarding how it matches up against our ed specs. So, if there are any significant deviations from ed specs, you're going to see as well. We will use the same information layout that we've used for master plans in the past, so that board members who have been on the board for previous...
With a master plan or something.
We, we actually intend to give you some information ahead of time so you know what you're looking at, and you know how to, about the information that you're getting. And then you're going to get an awful lot of, we'll call them appendices, right? But that sort of implies that they're not as important. It's actually just all of the supporting documentation that is led into this. So, we'll include things like the ed spec, but it'll also include all of the meeting minutes from the community engagement. We've done our CPC meetings, it'll include their work as well. Just trying to think, what else?
So, one of the big questions from the community at time, from the trust is like, is it going to be, like, maintain part of the facade? That, that will be answered, that will be answered in the master plan, or it will be answered?
Yes, that will be answered in the master plan. And we're going to show you two, two options tonight, so that's where we're going to head towards. We, we do want to, we want to show our cards a little bit, which is to say, if you haven't heard already, we're definitely getting some clear preferences. So, we're going to, we're going to give you a little bit of them too, but we do want to show you both of the options that everybody has looked at.
Awesome.
When we come back on the 30th, we will have one.
Okay.
Okay?
I have a question around, when you start looking at the, all the different methodologies you guys are using to reach out and connect with different individuals, is there a breakdown on the, the demographics? So, instead of saying the percentage, you know, X number of percent of people were there, or 30% of people did this, well, that could be three people. And so, do we get a breakdown that shows the demographics of the people that have been making the decisions around what Jeff is going to look like? Having sat through the Roosevelt redesign, it had a very Black focus in conversation, but the decisions was made by a lot of older white community members. And so, I want to be very clear in that, for me, I don't want to hear a bunch of white women, white men, white people in general telling me what's best for a Black community. So, I want to know that in our, in our dialogue, in our, in our reaching out, that we're able to look at the demographics, and if our target audience is this, then how is that target audience represented and at what, to what extent? And if we're not getting the results that we, we feel like we need to, like, to move forward because they're, they're not showing up, then I want to look at, how are we, how are we in being intentional about reaching out to those families, and what are some of the different avenues that we might need to, we might need to take to get them to the table? Because to me, to me, to simply say, "We tried, and they didn't show up, so we're moving on," is not enough.
I know you want to answer this, and if that's all right, I'll look for you to do that. But just real quick, before we get into that, I want to clarify the people making decisions. This is a very interesting, like, we hear this over and over again, who are the people making the decisions? Is the CPC making the decisions? Part of showing you that previous slide was to say, decisions are very complex, and sometimes the decisions are not made by people so much as they are made by circumstances, which is to say, if the code requires X, the decision is X, right? So, different things can influence what the ultimate shape of the object is, but it's not like there's one set of people making decisions. What we're trying to do is go out and gather as much input as possible. And so, that's where I think, I just want to process...
Well, I didn't let, let me be explicit.
No, I'd like Kareem to actually talk about the process, because I think he can answer more of what you're looking for.
Because there's some, from a legal, a code, I understand code.
Right.
And I understand that they can say, "We want you to build it seven stories high." Well, legally, I can't do that, so I don't care what you want, that decision's been made. So, I'm not talking about that. I'm presuming, all things being equal, given that the, the legalities of what we can do are being done, and the things that we can't do are not being done. And with all that being equal, when it comes down to saying, "We want to hear from the community, and we're going to use that community input to make, to help us guide what's in the building and what, what the spaces look like," that we're actually getting input and guidance from the individuals that we say that we want it from.
Exactly. And that's the part where I'm hoping Kareem can kind of step in and talk a little bit about this.
Happy to do so. So, our engagement strategy, our approach is built on community organizing strategy at Coliseum. So, we are not a traditional engagement practice, we're actually an architecture practice that uses organizing and advocacy as part of our tools for a more just environment and society. And what that means is that on every project that we work on, every project we're able to make it happen, we have a program where we actually, we are hiring onto our team folks from the communities that are most directly impacted and that are in relationship within their communities, have networks of folks that they can reach out to, that they can amplify what's going on, they can also, because they're already in, because they already have that lived experience and expertise and understanding of the issues impacting their communities, they bring that into the project and into, into our team's understanding of the context we're operating within in an immediate and much more direct manner than typical outreach process we hold, where you're just holding open houses and hoping that people will show up, for example, or just holding public meetings and hoping that people will attend. So, on this project, we've got seven folks as our community design organizing team, all of whom have deep relationships within the community around Jeff, where, again, as I mentioned, specifically focused on Black and Brown families and communities. And all of these folks bring multiple identities, right? Some people are complex, but we've got representation across generations from immediate past graduates of Jeff, 2020, class of 2021, through folks who have decades of experience working at the school or with the CPC, you know, in the neighborhood, folks who live in the neighborhood, folks who are displaced from the neighborhood, folks who are early child educators. This is a part of our strategy and part of our approach that is fundamental to being able to address the considerations that you're raising, which is how you make sure that the community that's most impacted is actually influencing decisions and outcomes. I'm not going to put all of the responsibility or weight on, on them by any means, and I'm not also going to, as you referenced earlier, say that it's within our ability to totally change the entire system and existing processes of a well-established institution like PPS. What I will say is that our primary focus and engagement, and we can share that, we ask people to share their demographic information voluntarily, we don't force people to do that, not everyone's comfortable doing so, but where we have that, we keep track of it. So, we can share how, what we've heard and who we've talked to lines up with various stakeholder communities of color and culture. And our focus first and foremost has been on Black students, Black families with historic connections to Alabama, North Portland, Northeast Portland, whether they are still in the neighborhood or not. It's not relegated to geographic location because we understand that there are broader systems impacting that. It's also important for me to note that we've been working on connecting more with the Latina communities that exist at Jeff and had some sessions with some stakeholders. We've got some student class, student workshops coming up with Latino Network meetings. But we haven't had interpretation resources available at any of the public town hall meetings or CPC meetings to be able to make it accessible to folks where English is not their first language. That's a barrier to access, that means we're not able to reach people. Even if we have flyers that are translated in those lang, in all the languages spoken, we can't actually invite people into that space if they don't have support there. We've been working towards addressing that. That's, again, not something that we can unilaterally address ourselves, but it is something that the community has asked for more support on and like to be able to offer it. Can say, at the open house that's coming up next week, we'll have Spanish interpreters, so that's a step in the right direction for sure. But it's also not entirely clear what avenues folks need to go through to request those types of support or accommodations. And I'll confess, it's not entirely clear, clear to me either. So, having said those things, the question of who's making decisions is not my decision, right? Not our team, the design team's decisions, and that question comes up constantly.
Well, actually, I think you answered it in that what I'm looking for is, are we tracking the demographics? Because we need to be able to go back to the community and be able to, be able to spell out, it's clear as mud, that we had, you know, we've had X number of meetings, and in those meetings, they have been represented by X number of people, and X number of our community has been there or has not been there. And so, we need more of us to come out if we want to have a voice. This is not to put all the onus on one, on any one organization or any one individual, but it's also to hold me accountable as well, to say, "Okay, am I doing my part to make sure that I'm spreading the word that if we want to hear from the Black community, that we need you to show up?" And then to hold everyone else accountable to say, "Stop saying that we want to hear from the Black community, and don't be intentional about making sure that they can show up." So, this is about, to me, an effort of accountability, to say, "This is what we've done, this is what it's looked like, and here's where it's written." So, I, I think you did answer it. I don't think, as far as like making the decision, I, I can recall, you know, everybody putting stuff on the board, "Write your dream and put it on the board," and then "Write this dream and put it on that board and tell me where it lands," and then come back. And then, several of the things that I didn't want, I wanted, didn't make it in, but several of the things that other people did. So, I get that. It's a, it's a big process, it's a big undertaking, but it's the tracking and the demographic, being a target demographic, and to be able to showcase that, that I want to make sure that we stay on top of.
I want to note too that I think the difference between Roosevelt and Jefferson and our community engagement is substantial. It really is. And I, you know, I think, I want to acknowledge that often when we pull together our planning committees, design advisor groups, we do get a lot of white people. And so, acknowledging that that particular venue may skew white, we have also brought in a lot of other venues, right? It's, it is not just about the planning committee, it's also about the work that College has been doing, reaching out, having one-on-one conversations, and meeting with specific focus groups. And I think one of the things that Kareem mentioned last week at the town hall was meeting with all the different alumni classes as separate focus groups to talk through what their specific, you know, concerns, interests, desires were. We have hosted events like a community barbecue. That is not, you know, again, it's a very different...
That makes a difference.
Casings.
Casings.
And I'm just saying, it does. Good barbecue is a destination.
It does. Okay, so I do want to get, I do, I do want to cut you off, but I do want to get to the two designs that we have, that we got like three more minutes, so.
Tough.
I want to get to the, the two designs that's on the table, right? I want to get to the two designs that's on the table right now.
Okay. We'll all move to the bubbles.
Did you approve of the rec, the Casey? Yeah.
That's cool.
That's cool.
Okay. I didn't hear that, so I was like.
I, I didn't want anybody to think that it wasn't important. I mean, we're having a public meeting, and the Black community that is watching is like, who cooked? I want to know. You know, saying you don't eat everybody's potato salad.
You're eating in three minutes.
Okay, can we go to, can we go to the, uh?
Now that, yes, this is important. Now that I'm hungry, we will pick you. So after all the engagement with various stakeholders and all of those groups that we've met with, we've narrowed down to some driving factors. And it's like that bubble that says reflects community feedback. If you can imagine all of the small bubbles inside of that. That is impacting all of its additional decision-making. And so including meeting square footage requirements, which is a standard. We've, they also asked to not have travel distances that were longer than any other school. Because like one of our initial schemes that we showed, it was like really long because we were also listening to not having a lot of stairs. And they were like, okay, that's too, too far. Let's not do that. And then simplest phasing possible for least disruption to students and staff. Existing students in new classrooms by 2026, with students staying on site during construction. All construction complete by 2028. Having athletic facilities that accommodate track and field practices and a flexible multi-use field for the South Block practices and potential other sports uses pending layout. And then, as I've mentioned before, that the design is to reflect community feedback and input.
Can I ask a question on the timing? So the other projects, I'm thinking the timelines were more condensed. So this would actually would be two, almost two bonds removed by the time it gets opened in the fall of 2028. Is this set up with a longer timeline?
In general, when we first laid this out for the bond measure, we did lay it out in a longer timeline, particularly planning and design figures, primarily so we get more community input. During that process, we anticipated we would really need to spend a lot more time listening. The construction itself, because we are keeping students on site, that has an impact on the construction. So this is the shortest we can possibly.
So like, for example, Franklin was 2012, and it opened in the fall of 2017. So those five years. So this, with the classrooms and keeping them on site, is actually just an extra year versus like the Franklin example.
Yeah.
And so then, then they're, they're still on site in new classrooms, but the whole way is on one. It's like a state-of-the-art project.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. A couple of questions. One, you said we're keeping them on site. Is that baked in? Is that locked in?
That is locked in. That is locked in. We have no real to put them, so that helps lock it in. The other piece of that is, the critical element for Jefferson is being able to maintain the connections to PCC due to the program that they have with PCC, and the fact that they go back and forth on the basis during the day. So we want them right there. That is something we are glad to hear.
Okay, so which, that's going to bring up another, another thought question for me, which I, that was new. Well, not new, but it's a, it brings up a new thought. One, having experienced Roosevelt going through a similar situation, but they were also choosing to modernize or to, and had do structural integrity type stuff. So with that, there was also certain limitations around construction hours, when the contractors could be in the building, when they could be working, what types of things they were going to be able to do. It was going to limit, so there was a lot of limitations when you have students, when you keep students in the mix. So how are we going to, how are we, how are we planning to address that? And there was a lot of conversation. I mean, it was a whole bunch of conversation around the idea and the possibility of with the construction happening so close to the school that we will be able to take students from Roosevelt, and they'd be able to see this work. Very little of that actually materialized. So it was great in concept. It was great in thought. It was terrible in actualization, actually coming, moving from vision to reality. So we sold something that never actually met. And then are we making sure that the Jefferson community is aware? That we might tell you this, but that doesn't necessarily, we're going to do it. It's almost like the Seinfeld episode. You know how to take the reservation. You just don't know how to keep the reservation. So, so I'm wondering, how do we go into that? The other piece is that it's listed at, with Jefferson students having 600 in the classroom. Is that just going to be a, a number that this is what we're going to have, but we're actually going to build the school for, for X amount? Because they may change.
Yes. Lots of questions.
Oh, I got, and I got so many of them.
I know.
I got, but I'm limited on time, and Garrett keeps looking at me.
I know. I'm going to try to answer briefly.
Okay.
So let's start with the easy one. 600 students right now. The, the school is being built for 1,700.
Okay.
Okay? However, that 600 plays into the construction phasing. And, and so we're going to be continuing to talk about that as well. The intent right now, the designs that they, the team has come up with, allow us to keep students not in the same buildings that are being worked on at the time they're being worked on. So.
We should go through the options, maybe.
They, they will be separated from the construction. But to the extent that we need to manage construction work hours, the sorts of things, we'll obviously be doing that. Our goal is to minimize the disruption. I think we've learned a lot since Roosevelt.
Oh, man.
As we know.
Don't, please, let's not bring up Roosevelt again. I know I can't.
We will not talk about the first pancake again. So.
It's a good thing.
We have actually worked very hard on the Lincoln Project to engage students in the construction. For the most part, that has been with, with, you know, construction-related CTE programs. It, we have to work with teachers, with educators to find purposes for them to bring students to, to sites. We're very happy to include students in the construction. We want to. In fact, from our perspective, we love to do that.
But I mean, I think part of our equity work with our contractors is requiring these contractors to provide these types of opportunities for students.
Yeah, absolutely. And so part of the career learning equity component of our EPTC, which is the Equity and Public Procurement Contracting Policy. I might have missed a P.
Don't even worry about it. It's a bunch of letters.
It's a bunch of letters, but part of that is really about providing opportunities for students to learn about these different careers. And so, yes, our, by contract, all of our contractors over a certain amount, which is where all of our OSN contractors are required to provide these opportunities. A certain number per year, and it's fairly well, you know, closely watched, I should say. So we work very hard to do that. We do report out on it to our PAC members as well in terms of the opportunities we provide to students. I think that, again, that's something that has evolved more since.
Yeah, because I was going to ask, how long has that been in place? Because if it was in place when we did Roosevelt, then clearly something isn't working. If it wasn't in place, then I'm glad to hear that we did it. But again, it, it would, it would behoove us to be clear about, if it was in place when we were designing Roosevelt and the same rules, again, all things being equal, if the same rules were in place and it's required that all of our contractors do this, then what happened? Because something failed miserably, and we want to ensure that that same failure doesn't happen again to the Black community. Because what I will see, what I will see will be that we make it work when we're doing, we're dealing with white students, and we, we're okay with it failing when we're dealing with Black students. And so that's what I'll see, because what I heard you say is that it worked well with Lincoln. We all agreed that it was piss poor with Roosevelt. And now if we don't do something to make sure that's right with, with Jeff, then the narrative, you painted. And I'm just going to amplify it. I'm just going to amplify the narrative that, so that's why I'm asking. Was it in place? And if it wasn't, great, let's share that message. That this was not in place, and as a result, we learned and we did this, this, and this. If it was in place, then let's get ready, let's get Freddie Mac involved and say, listen, I know that this is going to come up because we should have did this back then. Something didn't happen, and we're going to make sure, I'm just saying. Because you're not even going to have to worry about, like, the community, you know, like, discovery. You're going to have to worry about me telling.
Okay, so that's, that's something that we need to look into more. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't.
Yeah, it's great.
It wasn't placed. So that's something that we're looking, you can look into a little bit more as far as what the breakdowns were, and then try to make sure that that doesn't happen at the Jefferson.
I just don't want to see my Black community get failed twice.
No, it wasn't placed.
Because they're all my, they're all our kids.
Gotcha.
All right, I'm done. I'm Dr. Hollis. Thank you so much, sir.
I'm Dr. White.
That's the one.
Yeah, I got in trouble already for someone calling me that. All right, so we appreciate you guys. We got to move on to our next topic.
Are we going to include you now?
I know, but we, we leave it at 5:30.
But they, then we have to look at the options in order to be able to, be able to.
It's in your packet, right?
Did you need feedback, or you just want to share them with us?
No, it's fine. It's fine. They should, everybody should have looked at it in their packet. We got another topic that we got to get to.
I know, but the question I'm asking is.
Can you write it out? Send it to me? I'm, we're leaving at 5:30 regardless. So if you want, if you guys want to spit all your type on this, we can move. We just want to do the other topic today. But we have, we only got like.
Can I ask a short question and get a short answer?
We have 20 minutes. No, I want to know, are we going to just stick with this? Because there's going to be more questions. So if you want to stick with this, we can stick with this as a group.
As we move to the next topic, I'll email the question.
Okay. All right. So thank you, guys. But we got to move on to the next topic.
Okay.
All right. The next topic. You're up. Thank you, guys, so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So for the next topic, we don't, we actually do not have a presentation for the next topic. However, I do want to just kind of give a discussion about it. I would like to talk about why you're actually seeing the memo in your packets. This is a topic that has been discussed several times previously with board members and the facilities operations on the. Staff was directed by the Board Deputy Superintendent of Business Operations to review the Lincoln High School Modernization Project Budget after phase one, that construction was complete, and to discuss potential available funds for the project in relation to a proposed project building athletic facilities at the Southern Middle School. This memo addresses that request. As you will see from the memo, staff have provided a current forecast of potential budget savings from the Lincoln High School Modernization Project. However, the project is still in construction, and all insignificant funds from this large modernization project prior to project completion goes against best practice of managing project risk. In addition, cost savings from previous modernization projects such as the McDaniel High School Modernization and the Caligmental Small Replacement have consistently been returned to the bond program contingency. The purpose of bond program contingency is to cover unexpected costs related to the bond projects in administration. If modernization projects have cost overruns, those costs come from the bond program contingency. Cost underruns also return to bond program contingency. This allows the bond to balance cost over and underruns within the program. Staff recommends, following current practice, to return project cost savings to the bond program contingency when the project is complete.
So, well, just a quick question. How much are we anticipating the savings from Lincoln?
What I can tell you is what the forecast is today. What I can't tell you is the forecast will be when the project is complete.
So where we're at right now?
Right now, it is roughly 7.5 or 7.6 billion. That number changes because we are still in construction.
You guys have any questions?
Which, which ones I want to ask? So, I'm sorry, this is going back to the time machine. But in 2017, the, well, the 2012 bond, it was like, this is the amount of money we have, and we're going to do the, you know, we're going to try and produce the schools with the amount of money we have. And so, for example, at the end, at Franklin, I'll just speak to, because I know some people who were on the DAG, and it was like there was a bunch of value engineering. And at one point, Jerry Vincent called me and said, like, there wasn't going to be seats on the visitors' grandstands that were going to be posted, but there wasn't enough money for the seats. And, you know, if the, they wanted a brick exterior or something, like the alumni ended up selling, like, or having to contribute. And that was because they were short, but it wasn't like, we're going to come back and give you the money. Is, how, what's communicated to the school communities about the funds? Because it seems, it seems odd, like, hey, we've got extra money in this project, so we can do some add-ons. But if we were short in a project, the community had to pay for it. So just, and I know it's like a new muscle for PPS because we had a long time with no bond since 1995, between 1995 and 2012. And so like, what's our, what's our practice that we want to do? Because I would think it's like, we have one pool, and if you have savings, it goes to all the other facility needs. But so I'm curious, like, what gets communicated to school communities, or what's the practice we're developing?
Well, that is what we have tried to communicate is when we come in under budget, those funds go back to the bond program contingency, used for overruns elsewhere. The, the challenge, of course, is that every community feels like the, here's the, the money that was given to them, and therefore they should just use it. And I think what we're trying to say is, you know, every project has the possibility of going over or under, and we have to balance the overs with under funds. If, if we allow everything to just always go over, then we're not going to be able to do that. We have, as I mentioned in the introduction, we have returned funds from the McDaniel project to, to the program contingency. We've done the same thing with the Calipot project. For both of those projects, we were fortunate to come in under budget, and those funds have come back to the program. That allows us to do other things. Now, ideally, what we're going to do is put all those funds back at the end of the project. Then we can have a larger conversation about what additional can we do with the principal and vice, right? So we know within the 2017 bond, we already have a very specific set of health and safety programs that were laid out in the bond measure language, and I think we share that language with you in the memo. It's, it makes perfect sense to do additional work within those very specific descriptions because, because we can, right? We don't have to ask if it fits within the compensability of the bond. For bigger projects, it would be in our best interest to, A, go back to bond council and ask on specific scopes of work to ensure that they fit within the bond measure, but B, also to do a significant amount of community engagement and conversation about what the priorities are for these additional funds. Rather than saying, hey, we've got $8 million, it should go here. There are probably potentially other things it could go towards if we are confident we have that money to spend. And so maybe that needs to be a larger conversation about what all the potential opportunities are. Think of it similar to the conversations that we've had when you were putting together the, the scope of work for the 2020 bond measure. How did you prioritize? What were the things you focused? This is a little more constrained because we're constrained within the language of the 2017 bond, but it still has opportunities within that. And I think what we're saying is, wait until we get to a point where it makes sense that we can, we can say, hey, here is the chunk of money, and here's how much we have. Now we can decide what's the, the best way to spend that. We will have things like replacements that we still need, right? We will still have asbestos abatement that needs to happen, things that were within the 2017 program. So we want to be able to have a full conversation. But now is not the time to be giving money from a project that's not complete.
So when, when would that time be?
I think that's a fair question, and it's a little bit hard to say at the moment. I would like us to get through the completion of Lincoln at a minimum.
So what is the estimated time for?
So it is supposed to be complete with the final construction at the start of the next four years. There's a little bit of a shakeout period. I would think McDaniel Fields is a good example of things that can shake out. It could still be a potential significant cost. So, we, I wanna say no sooner than fall of twenty twenty-three, but I'd really rather look at early twenty twenty-four to have this conversation. And I do think that there are options. There are potentially other funds that could be coming back to twenty seventeen in terms of contingentous events that we already have, but maybe don't need for the risks that we currently have in there. But it's too early for me to say that those risks are going away. So, I want a little bit of time to see what the risks are and how they play out. And then we might have a potentially even bigger pot of money to have a really valuable conversation. We did very similar with Roosevelt Phase Four. That was a conversation with the board. We did a significant amount of community engagement, talked a lot of stories. The same thing with the grant opportunity for twenty twelve. So, this, it's consistent with what we've been doing.
I'm doing, oh, I'm still wanna leave it up. Do you have any questions?
I actually had a few questions. I'm just curious, you said the Calogeddel project and McDaniel's were both under budget, is that true?
They're not fully closed out yet, they will be under budget when they do.
Has there been any talk with past projects, what will be done with that extra money? Just to kind of show us what can be done?
At, at the time that we get towards the end, we always look at the items that were value engineered out during, early on, because there's always stuff that's been value engineered out. We always, it's a reality, because on the list is designed more than, than we can afford. And then we end up pairing it back to what we can afford. At the end of the project, we're always looking at opportunities to add those things back in if they fit within the budget. And, and we can actually do that in a way that makes sense, given where we are, having completed construction. So, we have done that, beyond that, we still had savings.
So, I went back and looked, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to, do we have, with the, we've done, we're completed with Franklin and Roosevelt. Those are completed.
They are completed, now, they're completed, but I will note that we do have funds in the twenty twenty bond measure for an additional planning and design effort for Phase Five for Roosevelt. So, there are already funds aside, those have not, we have not started that work yet.
Was there any, were there any, what do you call them, the leftover money?
No.
From either of those two schools?
The leftover funds that we had available in twenty twelve, we did actually put towards Phase Four of Roosevelt. So, that was a board-approved additional project.
Voted for that? Thank you. I wasn't able to say at that time, but thank you for voting.
Looking out for no vote.
What, what was that number? The leftover money? I'm trying to calculate how much leftover money is done, you know, because I know we don't wanna decide before things are done. And I also know the construction costs have gone up.
Yeah.
Quite significantly. When you got plywood, they cost a hundred and twenty-six dollars a sheet, when it used to cost seventeen. I mean, come on, but, but so, what was the number?
I can get you the exact number. Why I can tell you is that we set aside, I believe, five million for Phase Four. We ended up spending, I believe, closer to seven and a half, but I'll have to get you the exact number.
Okay, and that was for Roosevelt?
That was for Roosevelt.
What about Franklin?
Franklin did not have any significant additional projects.
Yeah, and actually, the community paid for some things. Like, if you want, because I think about the exterior skin got of the, the sports facility was, got changed to a cheaper material. And so, the Alumni Association raised money to pay for.
Roosevelt paid for a track before anybody else got a track, but I didn't wanna go down that road.
Yeah.
We got nine minutes.
We got a few minutes.
So, I just have a question, kind of following on Herman's, is, so I went back and looked at the voters' pamphlet statements that was submitted, and I was on the bond stakeholder advisory group of that. And actually, when the bond was passed, Lincoln was costed at one eighty-seven. And then, of course, we had the whole, we were a hundred million dollar, over a hundred million dollars short. We ended up having to take, I think, one fifty of Benson's. So, we didn't have enough money to do what we actually told the voters we would do. And so, then, but Lincoln got re-scope to one eighty, from one eighty-seven to two forty-two. But the whole bond was short, so I'm trying to figure out, like, and I should preface to say, I, I support all of our high schools having equitable facilities, whether it's outside the school or in the school. But I, I don't see, like, that we, I mean, I'm trying to think, like, how we could go from the conversation of, we have a whole audit, because what, what happened to the hundred million, hundred plus million, and now we have a surplus? Because to me, it's like, we don't really have a surplus for the bond, because we actually passed the twenty, twenty bond to, like, fill the shortfall from twenty seventeen. So, I guess, I'm looking at the, the Lincoln that we approved was one eighty-seven, like, and that we took to the voters, and it actually was two forty-two. So, now if it's, what, seven million less, so we got it for two thirty-five, it's still thirty, it's still thirty million dollars, or potentially over. So, I'm trying to.
Conceptually.
Like, rationalize, like, I think about how it all works and the message we give to school communities, because especially now we have larger contingencies, this is gonna come up more often.
I, I, it's, it is definitely challenging to kind of go through that conceptually in large part, because we, we did backfill the twenty seventeen project, budgets, I'm gonna say that very loosely, right? With twenty twenty funds. So, Benson in particular was split funding between seventeen and twenty twenty.
They talk about your school here.
I'm listening.
I mean, but despite that, even the amount that could potentially be left would not be enough to complete Benson. So, it's, right.
Well, I think the other overriding thing, when I, just having been on the bond stakeholder advisory group, but also looking at the, you know, our conversations with voters in our community, it was almost all driven by health and safety and accessibility. And that this bond was really a commitment, and so the language of at least one hundred and fifty. So, the theory of, like, there was money left over, that it would go into the whatever, five hundred million, six hundred million, however much our backlog of deferred maintenance is to keep our, to make our schools safe and warm and dry, that that would have been, I mean, I feel like that's kind of what got sold to the voters and the community at the time.
I think that's exactly the conversation.
Alright.
When it's to.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Can you put more questions here? Alright, we got five minutes.
Can I ask my question?
Should we go back to the slides on Jefferson?
Yes.
Yeah.
We got five minutes, let's get it. Y'all wanna get back to it or not?
Yes. Are you looking for feedback today? We are always on option one or two, or is that, was it just like, here's the preview?
We're, we're always looking for feedback, right?
What you got is had it in your, or a packet, so, I'll actually look at it.
I did, I was just, I guess, did they want to hear from us? Should we just email it to you or?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so my feedback is, I just wanna make sure that we have either, I guess, my question, question future, and you have to answer now, but like, do both of those options allow for the potential cositing on the extended property of the South Lot to allow a Tubman build?
So, yeah, I, I do wanna say, both of the options, the South Lot does not have building on it, right? So, that right there provides a lot more flexibility for us to address it during this point. And there will be trade-offs, not, just to be clear, there will be trade-offs. But it's not like we are gonna suddenly have to redesign and push a building somewhere else, because there is no building currently designed for that side.
So, the conversation we had the last meeting where?
So, that conversation we'll have in about a week.
Okay.
And then we can kind of go over that, that scenario with the whole topic. Okay.
Do you want me to try to, um, Kira, I'll have to get back in.
If you just wanna apply, or we have this slide back up.
Oh, so, yes.
Beautiful.
Up two pages.
Thank you. Sorry, one more. Thank you, okay. So, this is what we're calling the retain nineteen oh nine option, where we are retaining that main building and all new additions will be to the south of it. And we would build all new grandstands adjacent to the tracks, track and field.
They're taking out the tennis courts?
Correct. Um, and it's not all exactly designed, but that's what the diagram shows, correct?
Yes.
So, all other buildings besides the original nineteen oh nine structure would be removed. And the existing track and field would remain functional throughout the school year. And we would work to refurbish it most likely during the summer months. Next slide. This slide breaks down what the phasing would be on this retain nineteen oh nine option. On the left, you see the current school site plan. In Phase One, students would remain in the current building for classes. Almost all of the current structures and buildings associated program would be operational in Phase One. The only demolition that would occur in this phase would most likely be the auto shop building to make room for this new addition to the south. So, that complex would include enough classrooms, as of right now, for the current enrollment, the performing arts theater and supporting studio spaces, as well as the surveying commons. We would also build a new grandstand area in this phase and have the existing gym remain functional in this phase. For Phase Two, we move the students into the new classroom, the new buildings that were built in Phase One, and then we would demolish the existing gym and all of the remaining program between the existing nineteen oh nine building and the new building we just built. And so, that would include, like, the cafeteria, the theater, the old gym, things like that. And then we would abate and remodel the interior of the existing nineteen oh nine building to remain and build new programming connecting, and remodel it and build new programming connecting the new to the old, which would include most likely, like, a newer, larger commons, connecting circulation spaces, additional admin, classrooms, et cetera. In this scheme, we envision, oh, and crucial to the Phase Two would also be the creation of the two new gyms on the west side, on the curvy side. And in this scheme, we envisioned the lower levels of the west side of the original building to also have athletic functioning, so we would connect the north and the south fields with a sort of an athletics way on the west side of the campus. Um, next slide. This is what we're calling the new south option, where we're demolishing almost all the existing buildings, but retaining the existing main gym. And then adding all new buildings to the south. Again, the existing track and field would remain functional throughout the school year and refurbished during the summer months. And we would also work to have gym functioning, functional as well.
Is there an attachment to the, to the gym?
There is, that's, that's why we, we've provided an option here where in the replacement, we would retain that gym. In the, in the retain option, because the school, the existing school has so much square footage in it to additionally keep the main gym as well, we'd almost create an excess of space to renovate. So, but, you know, it's all being examined, but yes, so we provided an option where we're keeping the gym for the community to examine. Okay, so, in Phase One again, the students would remain in the current building for classes. All the program would be functional. We would also only need to most likely demolish the auto shop for this scheme to make room for a newer, larger, slightly larger complex than the other option that would include more than enough classrooms for the current enrollment, performing arts, theater, surveying and the commons. And we would also, again, build a new grandstand area and renovate the existing gym in this phase. For Phase Two, we would move the students into a new complex and then demolish all of the remaining existing buildings, except for the sixty-four gym, and then build out the rest of the program, connecting program to this sort of new athletics complex that's now on commercial as opposed to the last scheme, which had the athletics on the curvy side. So, that's pretty much the, the run-through of the options, yeah.
So, with community-wise, are they looking at more of the first one versus the second one?
Yeah, that's basically what the next slide was gonna say.
Sure.
So, so, that slide, I think I.
Oh, yeah, that's what I did, yeah.
So, yeah, in all of our feedback, it's overwhelmingly, generally, that they wanna keep the nineteen oh nine building. And then also, there's the caveat that this site is in the Piedmont Conservation District, and it's considered a contributing resource to, to that district. And so, we are beholden to landmarks, and we actually do have a design review meeting with them on the fourteenth, so we can gain further clarity on this subject. However, they are also in support of retaining the nineteen oh nine building, and they have indicated that they would need to hear overwhelming support from the community to tear the building down in order to support that.
What about the commentary that's on the left side there about individuals who want the the full replacement because of the distrust of the district of that it would be the same standards? Is it the standards, the ed spec standards, like, the classrooms would be too small? Or is it, like, not to code? Or what, which, what standard, because I'm thinking, if you, and then I'm not arguing for the full replacement, but I'm also looking at this, the trust issue. So, say we go with the community.
I think it goes to what Kareem was saying earlier, that they feel like if they keep the old building, that they'll be missing out on, on new, and they don't trust that we would renovate to the quality that we would get in a new building.
The, I'm just curious, do you think that, like, Grant, which, that's like a similar thing, where you keep the facade, that they would consider that is, like, you're getting what Grant's getting?
I don't know, have you heard anything from Kareem?
So, I think this comes to the, again, lack of general understanding or awareness of what renovation versus all-new construction means. So, I've been in conversations with folks where they've said, they should give us a new school like they did Grant or Franklin or Roosevelt or McDaniel, when all of those were renovation expansions. So, there's less citing of specific examples and more citing of the fact that structural and systemic racism exists in this country and that Black and Brown is disproportionately experienced on the resourcing and less investment in spaces that they occupy compared to wealthier, whiter communities, so.
So, more of just educating them on the benefits of the remodel piece, you know, versus them thinking Grant is all new, even though it's still, it was the same. So, it just sounds like a more education piece.
It is, sort of sharing that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so what do you guys need from us as far as direction?
We don't necessarily need direction, we're listening for input. If you have input, we wanna hear.
All the questions and concerns that you might have, now that you know a little bit more detail about the options, that's what we would be looking for.
I don't have any questions. I mean, I, I think the engagement piece that you guys have done has been remarkable. You know, a lot of people I'm hearing from, you know, are really appreciate the engagement piece that has happened around Jeff. And so, you know, and that's my main thing, is just making sure that the community under, knows and have more education scores. But their input is taken, you know, and however they want that, you know, that's the input that we take in, and we make the decisions based off of that. So, I have my own personal opinions of what it should be, but that's not for me to decide, that's for the community to decide. But I have heard a great.
But, I have heard, uh, a great appreciation for what you guys have done as far as around the community engagement piece, so, I'm good.
I'm good. I don't have many, sure.
Alright, alright, great, great. Thank you guys so much, and we are adjourned.